Tonight is Tuesday, September the 5th. This is the Cabarrus County Board of Education. We're in session and I'd like to call this meeting of order. First off, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as written?
I move.
Second. Mr. Harrison makes the motion and Ms. Walter seconds it. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the agenda as written, say aye. Close, same day. And it's approved, and that carries us to our first item. Ben Alred, we'll be coming to the podium, coming up the end here. And while he's coming, I'd first like to recognize Luke Zibo from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Luke, welcome forward. Thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. All right, small matter. Thank you again for your service and for what you do with those students out there. All right, Mr. Alred.
Good evening, everyone. How are we all doing?
Wonderful.
So, tonight, we have a report about a new program. For your information and questions, and I have a couple guests that I'll introduce in a little bit. Back in the spring, Rowan Cabarrus Community College approached us about starting an adult high school diploma program for some of our students. We met with counselors and graduation coaches and principals. They gathered feedback, went back to RCC, created a program for us, and that we feel really good about. Prior to the inception of this program, or I guess the genesis of the idea, students that dropped out and still wanted to go after a high school diploma didn't have an option, except to run over to Stanley County or down to Charlotte Mecklenburg. So, we're happy to have a program starting this fall for our students in Cabarrus County. So, the purpose of the program is adult high school. It's going to be offered collectively with Cabarrus County Schools and Rowan Cabarrus Community College. It's a diploma like any student would receive, just through an alternative method. Requirements are the same, are in alignment with the state, with our county, and with the community college. Right now, this is kind of our option. So, I've highlighted the adult high school diplomas so that you can see that. You know, we have a future-ready diploma and occupational course study for our students. They can take academy courses, IB, go to the early college, STEM classes, et cetera. Occupational course of study is for those students who don't meet the rigor of a future-ready diploma, students with disabilities. Our counselors, our social workers, our administrators, everyone works with those students. And then the next level for them is the Performance Learning Center. You guys are all familiar with the Performance Learning Center. It serves about 130 to 150 students in Cabarrus County schools through a mastery-based approach to a diploma. Even when those options don't work, we still go back to the table and we look at our minimum credit diploma. We meet twice a year, and we award that to around 15 to 20 students a year, which is about 1% to 2% of our student population. Beyond that, if we don't meet the students' needs, and they do happen to leave school without earning a diploma, the only option was that adult, or the equivalency, GED. I believe it's got a different name now, high school equivalency. I don't think the community college really likes that we call it a GED. They're making that transition. And that's where the adult high school diploma really comes into play. When our counselors go back to meet, and when our graduation coaches go back to meet with students and are looking for other options, this kind of slides in very nicely on the continuum. So, let me introduce real quick. We've got Kelly Mavropoulos, who's a graduation coach at Northwest Cabarrus High School, and Chrissy Tackich. She is a counselor, our lead counselor, at Concord High School. And we'll let them tell you a couple of short stories about the types of students that we're really hoping to reach with our adult high school diploma.
Good evening, board members. My name's Kelly Mavropoulos, and I am the very proud graduation coach at Northwest Cabarrus High School. When Ben approached me about talking to you guys, I was really excited because I think this could really help out our program and our graduation rate. It's good, but I think it can be even better. He told me to think about a student that would benefit for this, or we've used this method with, and I thought about this kid. His name is Matthew. And like most of our students, he came to us from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. He's an EC student, and he also suffered with severe self-esteem issues when he came to us. He absolutely hated school. If you ask him, he'll say, "I hated it from the first day I started kindergarten." And he was adamant that he hated school. He had horrible attendance. He had his effort very minimal. And I will say, he spent many hours in our Yes Center. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Yes Center, but credit recovery. So, we always say that if he would've stayed with us, he would've been a Watson graduate, because that's who is in our Yes Center. His senior year, he kept saying, "I just don't fit in, I don't fit in." And so, we got him into the PLC, the Performance Learning Center. He only stayed there a month. After a month, he quit, and he sat home doing absolutely nothing for four months. Nothing, no work, no anything. His parents would call me, and they would beg him to come back, and his parents were deaf, so there was that. That was also involved in this whole situation. Finally, he decided that he would come and talk to me, but that was it. He wasn't making any decisions. So, he came in, and he did tell me that day, he said, "I know I need some type of education, but Northwest ain't it. So, I need, what can I do?" And I said, "Tell me, why not Northwest? Because I love Northwest." I'm like, "Why not Northwest? Why wouldn't you want Northwest?" He said, "'Cause I'm 19 years old, and I'm not sitting in classes with 14-year-olds." And as a parent, I kind of respected that. And so, you know, I knew it took a lot for him to come in that day and to talk to us. And so, I started talking about the adult high school diploma. At that point, it was more Stanley Community College than Rowan. So, he liked that idea. And I said, "Well, what's different? Why do you like it?" And he said, "'Cause those are kids like me. Those are kids that are my age, that this just doesn't work for. This school setting just doesn't work for." And I told him that all his credits that he had with us, he had earned, he was a senior at that point, would transfer over. And he would probably have, you know, a few more months if he, you know, completed those classes. His eyes lit up, his parents were in there. We had a lady who was signing for us. They started to cry, like tear up, and they said that he did something that none of their... They had five other children that were older than him. He's the baby. And they said, "Our other five children never graduated. We have not, we never graduated from high school. So, we just want him to graduate any way, shape, form, means. No GED, adult high school diploma." And so, that is what this child did, and it worked for him. And so, I mean, I think this is huge. There's not a great deal of students that we would use this for. It's kind of one of those things like Ben said, when we have no more options, this is a great thing. But there are some kids, for example, another example real quick would be when we get transfer students in from New York City. And they, in New York, they were told they were seniors, but when they come here, they're not. They're juniors with, maybe we can get 15 credits out of them. And so, and they're 19, 20 years old. So, then what do we do? Because they're going to age out. So, do we let them sit in class and maybe pass classes until they age out, and then figure out what to do with them? And so, that's another option for them. And they like it because they can work around their schedule. They can work and they can, you know, get their diploma at the same time. And I don't like GED, whatever you call it, equivalency. I don't like it at all. But I really like this because they're still having to take those core classes. We're not giving them anything that they're having to still earn it. They're just earning it on their time versus on ours. So, thank you.
If we can make this happen.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Tackich. I am the lead counselor at Concord High School. And I want to share with you a story about a young lady that I met in the fall of 2013. So, I was new at Concord. I was very excited. It was my first experience working as a high school counselor, and I met this young lady in the cafeteria. She was a freshman. She came in, she had so much energy, and she was so proud to be a Spiter at Concord High. After her first semester, she earned three out of the four of her credits. We continue to have a relationship. We talked throughout the semester. I felt that we had a good bond because we came in together, and I said that we were going to celebrate in four years together. Unfortunately, the second semester of her freshman year, life sort of settled in with a lot of adult responsibilities. Her younger brother had some major medical things where she had to often be the caretaker. If mom had to leave and go to work, she was required to stay home to take care of him. She started missing unbelievable amounts of school, 30 and 40 days, and it continued to build from there. After that, there were multiple incarcerations with her mom, where she had to stay home and take care of the younger siblings. Her other younger brother faced a lot of mental health, and there were lots of different times where he was hospitalized, and somebody had to be at the hospital with him, somebody had to be with the younger sibling, and somebody needed to be working. So, once she became of age to work, then that was her responsibility to work. After her first semester of her freshman year, she never earned another credit, but she continued to come to Concord for three more years. She attended every semester. She came at the beginning of the semester and would always tell me all of the wonderful things that she was going to do, and how this was going to be this semester, and she was going to get everything back. But then life always settled back in, and she was faced with all the adult responsibilities. In a home, there were times when her mother would have to leave, and she was responsible for taking care of everything. We teamed a lot with the social worker, providing a lot of those basic needs of food. They lived without electricity for several months. The graduation coach, we talked about the Performance Learning Center, but that still provided her with the hours during the day when she needed to be either with her family or she needed to be working. So, she continued the rest of her first, or the rest of her second year of high school, the rest of her third year of high school, and she even started that first semester of her fourth year of high school, which was last year. And in November, she came to me, and she said, "I have the opportunity to have a full-time job, and it's the only way that I can support my family. My mom's gone again. She's gone for 90 more days. We don't have an option." And so, she withdrew. I felt that I had exhausted every possible resource that we had in the county, and I was kind of left at saying, "I'm sorry." We talked a little bit about Stanley, but when you have been, when you've always been a part of Cabarrus County and you know nothing other than Concord, it can be kind of scary to think about reaching out to Stanley County and trying to do some things online. So, when I heard about this program in the spring, I was so excited. I wanted to pick up the phone. I wanted to call her. I want to find a way to get this to her, because even after all of the setbacks that she had and all the things that she was given to take as challenges in life, she still wanted a diploma from Cabarrus County.
Thank you. You know, hearing those two stories reminds me that unlike my own upbringing and maybe yours, a lot of our kids have to become adults a lot earlier in life than we do. So, you know, they're doing adult things way earlier than I ever had to. A little bit of overview about the program. It's competency-based. It'll be a blend of online, face-to-face, multiple campuses. Gary Connor has been my contact over at Rowan Cabarrus, and he's been fantastic. They have a program in place, ready to implement. It'll be no-cost option to our students, which is another benefit. And one kind of last benefit, which is really great, we'll be able to share information back and forth between our entity, between Cabarrus County Schools and Rowan, for the benefit of possibly counting these students even for our own cohort graduation rate in Cabarrus County Schools. So, students who are able to meet that requirement, preferably within their five-year cohort graduation rate, will actually be able to, as kind of a cherry on top, count them in our graduation rate as well, which is really a fantastic option. So, if you have any questions, we'll entertain those now.
Board members, Ms. Furtinbaugh?
Yes, I sent a question. I don't know if it made it to you, Ben. I don't know what happens when we send questions.
It may have come. I did not see it.
Okay.
I can try to answer it now, of course.
It would be really helpful for me to understand the programs on the continuum, if there was almost like a matrix that said, "This is the location where the student can earn the credits to achieve that diploma. This is how many credits they need," as in the Cabarrus County minimum, state minimum, what's waived. So, you have a little bit covered in here, but just to see
Absolutely.
the whole flow. And I think just to educate me more in one quick data chart.
Sure.
So, like I say, it can be just one page. It doesn't have to be more complex than that. If it goes further, it's too much.
I will get you a one-page issue on all this program.
That'd be great.
Not a problem. Mr. Powell?
Yes, Mr. Alred, thank you for presenting, and especially Kelly and Chrissy also. You guys were fantastic and do lots of awesome things in the school, both of you. If a student goes in and gets caught up and works ahead, would they be able to take community college classes at no cost, the same as the high school credits?
So, I'm glad you brought that up. They won't be able to take community college courses at no cost, but I do believe that this is a gateway for students. I think if students go earn an adult high school diploma or are working towards it, I know that the community college is going to be coaching them, counseling them, and motivating them to really get in on that post-secondary outcome. I am sure that there are opportunities for students on financial aid and other ways through the community college. I'm not privy to all those. I could be glad to research that and get you something. But any student who is enrolled in Cabarrus County Schools, who takes community college classes, it is paid for through the Career and College Promise Course Program.
So, they're going to be Cabarrus County students? Well, they're not?
No. The students that are enrolled in the adult high school program will not be Cabarrus County School students. But through a legal statute, we would be able to, in certain circumstances, count them as graduates if they earn the adult high school diploma. But they would be Rowan Cabarrus Community College students.
Forgot my other question. I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Do you think this is going to hurt the PLC in any way?
No. Kind of to Chrissy's point, many of our students, as they explore that continuum, I actually see Dr. Williams over at the PLC possibly using this for students who are struggling, right? That aren't going to be able to fulfill their obligations there. I think this is another opportunity for he and Ms. Brooks, their counselor there, to actually move students to the next level if they drop out from there. I don't see it as in the way. Just like our basic diploma, we take maybe 30 applications a year and approve roughly half of those. And again, that's about 1% to 2% of our total graduating class each year. I don't see this being any higher incidence than that.
Mr. Harrison?
I suppose y'all, it can be said that y'all are keeping the door open. Thank y'all for keeping the doors open. There are many doors, and y'all are keeping several of them open for many in need. And I have known more than my share of those in need. Did you have an approximate number of students who would come through this program each year? Do you have an estimate of what
In researching
this program
In researching Stanley County, they're serving about 50 to 55 students currently, and a little under half of those students are actually Cabarrus County Schools.
Cabarrus or Kannapolis as well.
Correct.
So, all of
I believe we'll probably reach somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 60 students a year.
Okay. And so, there's not an age cutoff? Is there a age range of some sort?
There's not.
Okay.
There's age range on the lower end, right? Where you want students to have exhausted high school options and not be under that age. And there are also stipulations for students who don't meet 16- and 17-year-olds that sometimes have dropped out of high school. There are stipulations for that. And of course, students who are 18 to 20-years-old or emancipated students, of course, speak for themselves.
And Mr. Alred, I especially know, every year you jump through hoops to revise that huge, complex policy we have that has all the courses and things, which I think Ms. Furtinbaugh is asking for a simplified version of that for this program, but
I had to do that for Mr. Connor, so it makes it a little bit easier.
That's like calculus that you've got to pull together. But will what you're going to present to us
Yes.
be in that kind of format that explains this program?
It'll be graphical, color, block, easy to read.
Draw pictures. We like pictures.
Succinct.
Yeah, thank you.
So, in order to identify these students that are eligible for this, our counselors in Cabarrus County Schools will be connecting with the counselors in RCC and making sure that you've kind of done a handoff. Is that how you're scoping out the program?
There's a lot of logistics involved, and I know we'll have some growing pains. We meet with counselors monthly, and so through those counselor meetings, Mr. Connor will be involved in that, and they'll be providing us some enrollment information. We'll be tracking how individual students are doing, how the program is doing overall. And I anticipate, you know, one year down the road, we'll take a long look at how this year went, make any necessary changes along the way, codify the things that need to be codified. But we'll be speaking monthly about students as we go on. I know what'll happen with these two ladies specifically, as soon as we get the "Let's Go" and "Move Forward" and everything gets agreed with Dr. Spalding and Dr. Louder, they'll start making the phone calls for the students that they know that they just spoke about. So, it's really just a matter of getting the ball rolling. I think we're ready.
Is there any type of legal document that we'll need to produce?
There's a memorandum of agreement that the community college starts. They initiate that program, and it'll be a document between Dr. Louder and Dr. Spalding.
Thank you.
I'm just going to make a comment. I love that it takes the travel issue, the transportation issue, out because there are city buses that go to the south campus. So, hopefully, there's a way for the kids to get there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
What will be on the diploma? Will it be a diploma from
Yes, sir.
Cabarrus County?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, in essence, this is a diploma track. So, we can market it as another diploma track?
It is a, it's an adult high school diploma, yes. So, yeah, it's definitely, when we look at that slide that shows... Yeah, it's not moving. When you look at the slide with the options on it, I can't talk and do that at the same time, apparently.
Will this program follow the community college schedule or our start date?
That's a good question. I don't know that. I know that, in talking with Mr. Connor, he wants to meet our students where they are. So, I assume that he would meet our students where they are. But I can find that out for you.
Other questions? All right, board members, you want to put this on the
It's a report.
Is it a report?
Yeah. I made it easy for you guys tonight. No action.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for listening, and I think it's important to always just talk about the options and the collaboration we have between our entities. So, thank you. There's no approval necessary.
Well, the MOU would have to come back to us, would that not be
The way the community college wrote it specifically is between superintendent and Dr. Spalding as the president. They did not specify board or board of trustees specifically.
So, we wouldn't have to see the MOU?
You can see it, of course, but I
It's not financial.
Correct. There's no financial
Especially just an academic agreement.
Yep.
They'd agree that we give you, it's kind of like a two-way street. So, right, there's no obligation.
So, it's not an addendum to the existing MOU?
Yep.
And again, many other community colleges already have done it. That's why Stanley was doing it, and Rowan wasn't, so we're glad that they're adding that to the menu.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming, ladies. Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
All right, Ms. Reimer is coming up for the approval of second-read policies. Ms. Burns is here. All right, board members, are there any questions or comments on any of the three policies that we're looking at? Ms. Furtinbaugh?
I'd say, I had already asked Ms. Reimer that on 2500, page 2, number 5, there was just a statement. It's not one of the modified statements. That caught my eye, and I'll say, I've lost track of which policy is which. Did you know what I was referring to? Okay.
It's actually within the same policy. So, if you'll look at number 8, which is on page 3, is the language that you're talking about. Under 8, the second paragraph where it starts "A, a party must provide the board with a copy." So, Ms. Furtinbaugh found some language in the first paragraph, second paragraph on number 5, yeah. So, we would suggest as administration, but would obviously defer to our attorney to write something like, written statements should be submitted in advance of hearing unless otherwise specified. And then some sort of link or reference to 8. But again, we would defer that to our attorneys.
It just, in number 5, it refers In number 5, it refers to "in advance," and then here, it's giving a slight variation of the information. I just want to make sure we were in sync on those two statements. So, do we need to ask for a recommendation for an update for next week? It's really just syncing wording. It's not a new theory or anything to the policy.
No, it's not. So, it just says, "Written statements may be submitted at the hearing or in advance," is what Ms. Furtinbaugh's kind of talking about possibly being a conflict with on number 8, which was recently reworded. "A party must provide the board with a copy of a document evidence and the names of the additional witnesses at least two workdays prior to the hearing." So, that's the conflict that she's recognized. But again, I would defer that to our attorneys.
Well, I guess part of it is whether written statements is considered evidence. I always figure somebody can make these statements in the hearing, but at the hearing, they're going to have documents.
Yeah, the challenge we've had is people will bring in large statements with many attachments, and then we literally stop, or else we can't, don't have time to consider it, or we have to stop the hearing. So, that's what we're trying to avoid by asking for it in number 8 ahead of time.
You could do the same thing in number 5.
Yeah, I just thought it was kind of in conflict, so.
Because it does launch hearings, and I don't want to be considered anything, but you have to say it before.
That's what we were, we wanted to have the stuff, you know, the packet we have. We wanted to have all that stuff beforehand, so we didn't have to stop the hearing, read the stuff, and have everything in hand before we got to the hearing. Instead of us stopping and to read the stuff and do all that before we got to the hearing.
And also to facilitate Ms. Monroe's work to have a full and complete package for us, what, 48 hours before the hearing?
I guess what I would say is modify 5.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Modify number 5 to be consistent with number 8, so that it'll be submitted at least two days in advance of the hearing? So, that second sentence, "Written statements may be submitted at the hearing." How about, "Written statements may be submitted at least two days in advance of the hearing." Then that's, it avoids the inconsistency aspect, and then it also gets the board members a chance to see those documents beforehand. Does that make sense? And if that were going to be done, I still think it could remain as a consent item if everybody's satisfied with that. The last piece, or what we're going to change?
We can review it next week. You can Let's make the changes and
Basically, it would say, "Written statements on that second paragraph on number 5, written statements may be submitted two workdays in advance of the hearing, unless otherwise specified." You can always have a particular rule for some particular case that we make some modification. At least then, 5 and 8 are consistent, and that gives the board members a chance to get that packet a day or so in advance of the hearing. Rather than a written statement showing up at the date of the hearing, it's not exactly clear what a written statement is. We may think it's a one-page statement. They may think it's a 10-page statement with 30 attachments, and we point to paragraph 8, and they point to paragraph 5. So, this will clear it up.
The only concern I have is that if the part of the written statement, part of the written statement or the packet that we receive has something about attendance, for example, and the administration knows that attendance, that the statement we received is inaccurate, and they want to submit something out within that window, then I think they should have the opportunity to submit that, in essence, in rebuttal of any false statements or that kind of thing. So, I just, to limit what can be presented at the hearing, maybe is a little problematic. And I know it doesn't necessarily say that must or shall, or whatever the language is. Just got to be careful that we don't limit the flow of accurate information.
Well, I think they can always come in and say something verbally, right? They can always bring that information to us verbally, that that was incorrect, that the other party said, or whatever.
I think they can always bring it verbally. The board always has the power to control its own meetings. So, if somebody brings it verbally and also hears a document that rebuts what the other side said, I would've had it in there by, you know, Tuesday before the Thursday hearing, but I didn't hear about it until Tuesday. Would the board please accept it? I imagine in most circumstances, the board would allow that to come in, but that's, of course, a decision of the board at that time. But I think you're right. It shouldn't be limited if there's some response, if that makes sense.
In our committee meeting, under number 8, the last sentence on the bigger paragraph there, it says, "Upon receipt of any new information, the board may reschedule the hearing to prevent a threat." So, it doesn't mean they have to. So, just as you said, you would have the authority to either take it or not take it. And then at the bottom of the first paragraph, "New evidence will be permitted unless necessary to prevent a threat of substantial unfairness."
So, if somebody brings in something, let's say it's a Thursday hearing, two days before somebody, party raised So if somebody brings in something, let's say it's a Thursday hearing, two days before somebody, a party raises something on Tuesday, the other party says, "I have not had a time to digest this. I know there's more information out there, but I need to hear from so-and-so at the State Board of Education." And the board might say, "We'll give more time." But it's discretionary. Tell me what you're looking for, how much information is it? I don't, I don't like to bind the board in making, you know, hearings happen. We do want to give people a fair chance, of course, to submit information.
Consent?
Consent?
On 4150, I'm still uncomfortable with the language on page five, so I'd like to see that on action. Basically, the striking of, I don't like the striking of the last portion of the first sentence where it says, "By the end of the current grading period or semester." Page five, under B. First sentence under B, I'd like to see that language remain. I think it's beneficial to the student to finish out the grading period or semester instead of moving and transitioning between semesters. I don't think that's benefits the student in any way.
I think that was a legal point that my partner, Mr. Schwartz, had mentioned, that once somebody moves out, legally, they no longer have a right to stay. They can always request to stay, and it makes a lot of sense to me academically that they be allowed to stay. But I, I think that's what he was addressing, is that legally their right to attend Cabarrus County Schools leaves once, once they go.
I'm focused on the best interest of students, and I don't, I would like to see that language stay, so that's why I'd like to see it on action.
The one thing that I'll just mention is that is our current practice, as long as they're within good standing. So when they're not within good standing, we would only be concerned that this policy, if you left it in there, would bind us and say, "They're not within good standing, and therefore we'd still have to allow them to remain." So that would be the only concern for administration, but certainly understand.
Yeah, I think it still allows the student to stay. All it is, is the parents requesting that we'd like to stay for the remaining six weeks or something.
I don't know, I just see it as an additional burden on the family that may or may not be approved, and if it's on there and it says they're okay till the end of the grading period or semester, I think that's in the best interest of a student to, if that's the case of the family.
Would you support some sort of conditional language attached to that?
Probably.
Like if it's in good standing or something like that?
Exactly.
Because it may well be people that are, we're thinking of the great kid that everybody, we hate to see them leave, but what if somebody, we say, we just assume they move out of county, they've moved out of county, but, and they should be in the other school system, do we have to keep them in this school system? So I think, I think we could come up with a change of language, if in good standing academically and behaviorally.
So you're going to report that wording?
That's good. You convinced you to read it. Good job.
So it'll be on action, or you want it on consent? If they make the wording change?
I kind of like to read things before I just vote on it, so I would like to see the wording and then, yes.
All right, we'll just bring it back on the action. Okay, 1740, is that consent? All right. All right, thank you very much. That brings us up to items for consideration, the bus driver pay increase. Ms. Klutz is coming forward to talk to us about helping our bus drivers out.
Good evening. So as you said, we want to talk about bus driver pay increases. And so normal pay increases were allocated by the state and then matched locally, with all, all the exception of bus drivers. They held those positions out separately because they, they allocated additional funds, more funds to bus drivers than they did any other area because of the retention problem, being able to get bus drivers and retain them. So they weren't sure exactly how they were going to do that. At first, they just allocated $16.8 million in the state budget and then indicated that it should be distributed in an equitable manner. And so that took a little while to figure out, so it went to the state board, and the state board approved it. And then they allocated the funds out to the districts. And when we received our funds, we received $453,671 for bus driver pay increases exclusively. So when we ran that calculation on how much it would be for our bus drivers, it was 84 cent per employee, per hour. And the normal, the pay increase that all of our other non-certified folks got, our maintenance, our clerical, our custodial, all of the transportation mechanics, those kind of things, were four, was 48 cent. So the drivers got 84 cent. That translate, if you're looking at, so our, our normal folks, normal folks are the other folks, the clerical, custodial, all of those, the, the raise was $1,000 for a 12-month employee, and so $833 for a 10-month employee, which then translates to a bus driver, if a bus driver was a 12-month employee, it'd be $1,750, just so that you can compare those numbers. So significantly higher than what our other folks were, were given. Because this, the allocation came late in the process and all of that, so we have now applied the 84 cent to the drivers' pay, and we have backdated or retropaid anything till July the first. So those are your early college drivers, your year-round drivers, any kind of summer pay, all of those have been retropaid for that. The other component that I would call to your attention is that this allocation was made specifically to the transportation allotment. We also have EC bus monitors that we pay as bus drivers also, so that they can interchange. If a bus driver is out, a monitor can just slip right into that place, and especially when it's an EC child or children on that bus, it's valuable to do that. Although that is great, and we do that in our system, the, the state did not allocate money for those. So you see a difference of, it's going to cost us $476,000, and we receive $453,000. So it's going to cost the district about $23,000, but we pay them on the same pay schedule, and we need to do that.
So what does the board need to approve? Are you going to give us a budget amendment?
No, yes, eventually. The budget amendment will come next month.
Okay.
But you need to approve the plan.
Even though you're paying them already?
Even, yeah.
That sounds like I'm confused. It's already happening.
Yeah, so we kind of do that with the budget in general anyway, so you didn't approve the budget till August.
Yeah.
And we were paying folks in July.
Yeah. Okay, now that's good. This is like a good-
Yeah, it's great.
Piece of information, so.
Ms. Klutz, can you recap the salary bump up that bus drivers have received over the last few years? I mean, there've been so many little incremental things from so many different directions, but can you just give a quick summary of, of some of those things? I know here we're talking about one allocation, but there've been some improvements over the past couple of years that would be good history to hear.
And I had a note here to mention that. So I think probably what you're referring to is the, the local increase that we have been able to accommodate for. So for employees that work in Cabarrus County, we've been able to give them a step in their pay scale every other year. So for every two years of experience, they get one step on the pay schedule, so they're not stagnant and they're moving. And so that's kind of similar to a cost of living type raise. It just keeps us moving up so that we're not behind. And when we take, when we brought this to the board, we called it compression, because that's really what it is, is a compression pay increase. So every two years, they get approximately 2.5% increase, in addition to anything that the state gives them or us.
Other questions? All right, consent agenda?
Why don't we put that on vote, since we're actually having to come up with actual additional money? I would like to just put it on record voting, since we are, I don't know.
Can you explain why EC funds out of the EC budget and not the regular, like we've done in the past?
Yeah, sure. So to transport children, we're required to transport children, all children, and so we do that with the transportation funds. But when you want additional services or additional support that wouldn't be provided in the normal, the normal day, then somebody else has to pay for that. So these are monitors that are only on the EC buses. So the regular routes just have a driver.
Okay, so the 2.5% we were talking, just about talking about, that's also out of EC funds?
No, huh, we, those are local and state and any combination of, no, the 2.5% is not.
Okay, I'm a little confused on, we have to use EC funds for this, this group, but we don't have to use EC funds when we did it?
I'm not going to be able to use EC funds. All of our EC funds are extended. It's going to have to come from a, from a different source. Our EC budget's too tight to be able to take this $23,000 out of it.
Am I reading that wrong? Additional funds need to come from EC funds, since our monitors are paid with EC funds and serve EC students?
I'm going to have to move EC, I'm going to have to move funds over into EC to cover it. It's going to-
But there's no EC funds to cover.
There's no additional EC funds. I'm going to have to move local or state over to pay that difference.
And that's what you'll present us as the budget amendment in October, which will show that, what Rob's asked about.
But we need to approve this, this month.
She wants us to approve the plan.
We need to approve the plan, mhm.
The plan, but that, but since it is money involved, that's why I was saying I'd rather have it on the action agenda instead of just consent agenda, is what I was saying, since there's going to be money involved with it.
I'd like to agree with Ms. Carpenter, please.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Klutz. That brings up Mr. Matthew Fail to talk to us about the alternative accountability model options. Hey, Matthew, how are you doing?
Good evening. As you're aware with the memo that you received from DPI and Board Docs for the alternative accountability model options, that we can apply for school performance grades to any of our alternative schools, we have to make a choice as to which one of the options we want to use for the opportunity school.
Not turned on? I can hear me just fine. So we have to make a choice for one of the, for our alternative schools, which is the opportunity school and the PLC. You see those choices in front of you. Since its inception, the opportunity school has always used choice B, and the PLC has always used choice A. So our recommendation is simply to continue with those options in the coming year. Any questions?
Mr. Walter, you've always had those four options. Are there no, any new options, is that what?
Since the inception of having these options, which I think was 2014, as outlined in the memo, those have been the only options that we've had, and it, and they've remained the only four.
Consent?
Yeah, has, has it worked for us as far as how you're doing the reporting and whatnot, it makes sense?
Yeah, it seems to work very well for our system. We haven't, I guess, had any complaints about it, and we've been doing it for quite a few years.
All right, so that's the consent agenda, Ms. Monroe. All right. Next up is Mr. Tim Louder, and he's going to talk to us about the architect contract approval for the new Southwest Elementary School.
Good evening. You have in your package a, an AIA agreement that we've negotiated on behalf of the school system, with Yates, Kreisberg, Hughes. What we've done with this contract, we have broken it into two phases, first phase being design, development, up through bidding. And then phase two would be the construction administration after bidding. Right now, we have $985,000 in the budget for architectural services, and that's how we split it up as phase one, phase two. We'd ask that you consider adopting this contract, and then award phase one is what we have funded for at the present time, and we'll fund phase two after the first of the year, once, you know, all the books are closed and we can move monies.
Board members, if you remember, I had to send you a copy of this earlier this weekend, so you'd have the most current copy. There were not a lot of changes, and Board Docs has been updated, yes.
All we did there was just shift the roadway design allowance into the phase one versus split up in partially in phase two.
The bottom line of the contract still stayed the same. Actually, the allocations didn't change that much either.
Yes, sir.
I just want to ask clarification on that. The 10-year plan mentions that this school will be $26 million, and this architectural contract has it listed as $21 million. And I know we bought land and everything else, so are we still within the 10-year plan expectations of what this total package is going to cost when, when, when the doors open?
The $26 million was the total, total funding available for the entire package, just land, design, development, construction, and furnishings and, and, and everything else that beyond that, too. It's going to be tight at $21 million, given today's environment. The school will be 110,000 square feet. Well, it has to be programmatically in order to house that many students, period. And in doing so, if the bids continue to hold their own, which they seem to be, this may come in at $210 square foot. If that's the case, we're probably a million and a half, $2 million short. But we'll have to work on that as we get closer to bid day.
One, one thing to keep in mind, I'm sorry. And it was, it was brought up earlier tonight, you know, when we're talking about designing and we're looking at another high, high-traffic, high area, and make sure this is in the notes, because I want somebody that can, they can go back and say, "Carpenter said this." And, and cameraman, get this on camera, because we're looking at Odell, because this is a high-traffic area, too. Make sure when we're designing this thing, when we got areas where they're going to drop the kids off and everything, where we're doing stack-up and everything, that we have places where those parents can get off the highway, get off the roadway. Because we see this on Weddington, we see this at Harris Road, and, and Hickory Ridge is the same way, because we've got a high school, we've got a element, we've got a middle school, and now we're going to do an elementary school. And we don't want people on the side of the road on, on Hickory Ridge Road. So make sure we got enough space for those people to get in that school and not be on Hickory Ridge Road.
Well, I will tell you that the new high school has almost a half a mile of stacking off the road, which will probably not be enough, because people just won't let kids ride the bus for some reason. Don't know why, but that's just the way it is. And I can only design so much roadway and spend that much money for a 15-minute drop-off and a 15-minute pickup every day. So, you know, it starts to be a balance of that. And I could build a mile of roadway on this site and stack everybody, guaranteed, 100% off-site. But are we going to spend that much money that we need to put in the classroom, because people won't let the kids ride the bus? I mean, that's my opinion on it, but-
Well, I mean, it's, it's starting to get more dangerous and more dangerous, and we are seeing such a bad situation right now over at Odell. I mean, it is, and, and over in Odell and here-
That's the old Odell, yeah, primary.
At the primary and everything, and we are starting to get more and more and more complaints, and, and I, I, I'm just, I mean, people keep asking us, "Why didn't y'all think of this when you were building this thing?" So I'm just making, I'm, I'm bringing it up now, so.
You're more than welcome to bring that up. We do think about it every time, and the new Odell, the Odell on, it has almost, almost a half a mile of roadway storage on that school, which is, you know, made it much more expensive, but we stacked it because it's a very high-traffic area. The old Odell was put on a, if you recall, a donated site. It was probably half the size it needed to be for the actual school that was built on it. So that's the reason that was a situation there. The high school itself now has two entrances. It's just a matter of working out the traffic pattern so that they can actually use those two entrances to systematically get people off of Hickory Ridge Road.
And I know that we talked about some, trying to make some of it longer by using the parking rec, field parking type thing, and those type things. And I know that Ms. Furtinball had some questions, too, that you had sent in. I didn't know if you had received those, talking about the contract. And didn't you have some of those, Ms. Furtinball? And didn't you have some of those, Ms. Furtinball? Yeah, from today.
Yeah, on 11 points, well, two questions. One, 11.7. I believe in the modifications, the spacing was just messed up on the rates, so that we get that lined up. Andrew, do you see that?
Unfortunately, we can't get it lined up. It's a, it's a little quirk in the document. Ms. Kurney's worked very, very hard to get everything lined up. Matter of fact, the, the compensation above it had to be pasted as a, almost as a photograph with the end of that document.
I just think that's important to...
It is, but we understand how it drops, but the principals are at the higher rate. And then, and if you line up the 50, it starts at the lower rate and goes up. There's supposed to be a gap between the 250 and the 165. Sorry, I'm touching the screen, I guess.
Yeah, I just think that's important, because it is a rate of pay.
And unfortunately, I'm not sure we can fix it.
Then paste over it, maybe. Anything financial's got to be clear. It can't be, you know, it won't let me format it. So, I think somehow we need to get the right chart. I mean, honestly, it favors us right now, because right now, it says Bill Hughes is 165. So, but I just want it to be fair and not have that be a point of discussion later.
Okay, I will get with the attorney and see what we can do. This is the third time we purchased this contract in order to make it work. You have to purchase a brand-new one every time you do it. And that's just, it's kind of a crazy little form, and it's just the way AIA does it, but we'll see what we can do.
I mean, Andrew, is there, or Bill, is there a way for us to annotate that somehow? You know, with, you know, how you do a real estate contract, and you initial it? Just to make sure that it drops down? Because I think what that means is principals are 250, and then project architect is 165.
You're correct.
But it's not, that's not, I just figured that out, honestly, now. Last night, when I was looking at it, I'm like, what's wrong with this?
I was looking at your draft, and it's right. And then, I guess, when you get it printed, sometimes it's, it's a formatting issue when you finalize your AIA.
We just, I guess, when we vote on it, we just need to have it.
Just put it in the minutes, if you will.
Yeah, and if we need to draw line and the board chair, the principal, and the architect initial it?
Yeah, I think it's worth initialing, so...
It's just a formatting issue that wants, on the screen, it's perfect. When it goes to print, it does not. When, once you make a PDF and print it, it closes the gaps for some reason. I wish it was a typical Word document, but unfortunately, it's a form created specifically for AIA, and it just doesn't allow you to edit it as easily as you should. Well, that's about all I could fix, is go back and insert a photograph of a table, actually. A table, it still does the same thing.
On page 21. Can you explain the second paragraph?
Begins with an allowance.
Yes.
Allowance is $40,000. In the first phase, right now, we do not know the total scope of the work associated with the NCDOT requirements for Hickory Ridge Road. So, what we've done, we put a $40,000 allowance in the total contract. So, once that scope is done, then they, they'll price it accordingly.
So, based on your experience, is that what you think it's going to be, or is it...
It'll probably be that or less.
Or less than that?
Yes. I mean, this is, in some other places, like if we were at the high school, we had quite a bit of, in this case here, because of where it's located on Hickory Ridge Road, and already, all the intersections at Rocky River and Hickory Ridge have already been updated significantly by the developers in the area. Not much I can do off-site, so it's pretty much going to be based on turn lanes right there on the site, which would be probably well within that scope.
I don't know about the rest of the board, but I again want to agree with Ms. Carpenter, because I'd like to see a detailed plan of the ingress and egress of getting on and off the road into the school property at some point. I'd like to know exactly what that's going to look like.
If you could go back to that scheme, see the scheme here?
Because the traffic on that road is going to only increase exponentially, we all know that. We'll get to a point where there, where there will be some foot traffic, I wouldn't doubt, in the future. And, you know, we went through a kid getting hurt at the Cox Mill High School at one point, before we got to a point of agreeing to work with DOT about some kind of lights and walkway types of matters. It's, it's still a matter of how fast people are traveling, I know that. But we've got to do our part to make sure that the road is slowing people down and keeping children safe.
If you, if you look at the concept on the screen, the top entrance, the northern entrance, is the actual car rider entrance. You know, she'll be able to go in that entrance all the way down to the cul-de-sac at the back of the property, back up the cul-de-sac, and loop back in and around in front of the school, which gives us the maximum amount of off-site distance we possibly could do. If, if not, I don't know what else we'd put on site. So, we have tried to do, this one will probably give us in the neighborhood of 1,800 to maybe 2,000 feet of stacking on-site. And it also provides the instance cul-de-sac to, to a future park development to allow us to do that. So, we're going to utilize that roadway as, as a future access to the park areas, but that gives us the maximum opportunity to store cars on-site.
But are there lights at those entrances?
No, sir, there probably will not be. It will not have enough warrants. Like I say, we have a 15-minute issue in the morning, a 15-minute in the afternoon, and DOT will not stop traffic on Hickory Ridge Road all day long for that.
I was wondering about 11.82. The reimbursement expense shall be the expense of incurred by the architect and the architect's consultant plus 10% of the expenses incurred, plus it's getting all these other ones. Why are we paying them 10% of the expenses?
That only applies to the reimbursables that we have, and that's only if it's outside of the actual contract itself. So, if we don't go over the existing contract and have a lot of reimburseals outside, then that would not be there.
Okay, but, I mean, so, I mean, because we're paying all this other stuff already, transportation, long distance, and paying all this other stuff, so...
That's your direct expenses that you would have under reimbursables. Fortunately, this is local architect, so those reimburseals will be almost negligible.
Okay.
If he has to travel to Raleigh, if he has to travel, I don't know whether he has to travel to State, but I mean, I'm just traveling on long distances on our behalf to meet with someone, then that, that would, whatever his expense would be, plus 10%, which is basically your markup for handling everything.
Okay, but is it, but is that a normal thing, 10%?
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, it didn't, it didn't change it. That's standard in the contract for most, all AIA documents.
Okay, so that is something that's, so we, was that on our last one?
Yes, ma'am. If it was AIA document, it should have been.
Oh, okay.
We didn't change anything about that part of the language.
Oh, okay.
Board members? Consent agenda, if they can line up the, I don't believe that they'll line up the, the costs, and then I can initial those.
I think the significant needs to be action.
Okay.
I think it's too big dollar to be consent.
There we go. Thank you, Ms. Louder. But that brings us, that brings us to 5.4, which is the naming of facilities, new high school on Weddington Road. Board members, as you see, we have some file attachments. That's the policy 9300 on naming schools and 93AG, 9300 AG. And then, we have the naming facilities forms that will also be, also in Board Docs. Dr. Louder, you're going to put this information on, on our webpage so that we can get to it?
Yeah, I think what we said was that this is a, this is totally a board action. So, if you guys agreed to this and then say, hey, this is what we want to do, then we'll do it. So, we were just saying, here's what we've used in the past. You guys take that, modify it, and then if you say, we want this to be on the front page or whatever, then we'll, we'll comply to whatever you guys want to do.
So, this is official notice for the public that we will, we'd like to receive some suggestions for the name of the new high school, and we, we receive a few at this point, but we want to go ahead and make official notice that we're ready to think about that, that part of the process. Mr. Harrison?
When will the nominations close, so to speak? What is the deadline, and what are the end dates of these suggestions? People have until what date to provide this nomination?
Well, no date has been set. That's up for the board to make a discussion. Ms., Ms. Reimer, do you have...
We can let Mr. Louder speak, or even Dr. Louder, just about the timing from administration's purposes and within the, the architect and the drawings and the things that they're currently doing. Tim may want to speak to that as well.
Yeah, Tim can probably speak better than anybody else. Again, the board ultimately will decide, but I think the sooner the better, based on some requirements. And Tim can talk about what requirements there are, right?
Well, our biggest issue is we're, one of our biggest issues is we're already in the contract phase. We expect the construction contract for signatures from our board chairman this week. Once we go into contract, we're going to begin buyout within the project. And he's a contractor who's going to try to go in and lock in all his prices for all of his materials. Okay, and in those materials, there's usually colors, there's mascots, there's logos, there's signage, and all that sort of thing that's put into that pricing. And not having that very soon puts us in a bind. They will price a generic, and then we come in, and if there's anything changes beyond, something to be somewhat generic, then all of a sudden, we're hit with a change order saying, well, this is going to be more expensive, or this is going to be different. I would like to have that locked in, it's before the buyout rather than after. And so, therefore, you know, well, actually, we're two years away. So, it's really kind of nice to be able to go in and get started, so I can order signage, I can order, we can start looking at mascots, because obviously mascots usually rhyme with the name of the school, you know? You don't have, and so that, where, if you have those sort of things, you want to be able to do that so we can get that ball rolling as soon as possible. And, you know, I said, we're only two years away from opening, which sounds like a long way, but it's really not in the construction side.
And so, I just think the public would appreciate knowing a date, that after a certain date, no more nominations would be accepted, and we would work with what we had up to that date.
Is voting on this by November, like saying 60 days? So, if we look at all submissions need to be in, say, by the end of October, is that soon enough or not? That's too slow? And then, we vote in November? We could hear...
September, I mean, I, I guess we could make it work then. But I, I'd like to have it definitely before the end of the year.
Yeah, I think, what if we do that, if we set some date, the end of October, for example? Everything needs to be submitted, so it's prepared for us in our first meeting, which will be November 6th, and then we won't have our business meeting until November 20th.
I'll support that.
It would be doable, and that's what the public could work from.
Yes, sir.
So, can we modify this form, since you're now saying that we don't have a name or a logo or mascot, that they could also suggest the mascot or the colors or what?
I, I don't know, that's, that's your choice, I don't know. I mean, obviously, that's something I would be, you have a school team, board together, but...
If you're saying that the mascot is related to a name, I'm open to hear that as well.
I think the mascot, we have left to the future student body. Yeah, so we do the name, and the mascot's gone.
So, what you were saying, that's not, so the case isn't, we don't choose the mascot now, we choose the colors? What, what are we asking besides the name of the student?
We designed it with a specific color scheme in mind.
Okay, so there is another, there is already a color scheme, or there isn't?
We designed it with a specific color scheme in mind.
What color scheme?
It's red, gray, and black. Those are, those are the primary colors for the school. We don't have a red or a black school in the county, so it's, we're just trying to...
And is that fire engine red or apple red?
It needs to be...
It's not maroon, red.
Yeah, it needs to be primary red, not burgundy.
It's not maroon or burgundy or anything, sort of thing. But it is also cheaper, because it's a primary color. That way, you can buy things that are not odd colors. You start getting the teals and the greens, it gets a little expensive, because you're having to buy specialized colors for not only the bleachers, but, you know, padding, everything. So, we'd like to keep that. But given that the case, whatever you name the school, I, I would suggest that you would probably pull in maybe a student committee from maybe some kids you know are going to be in the area, geographic around the school that will probably be at the school, that might want to have some input and, or suggest mascots that you could also look at as well. But how do you want to do it? But I think it's probably good that students do it.
Okay, but our job, our job is the name, is that, yeah, pretty much, okay.
It's typically been between redistricting and, I'll say, probably a good five months or more. I think Hickory Ridge maybe picked their mascot in January timeframe, February, with opening in August. So, there was all that enthusiasm and all that...
I do think the principal has normally led that, because I remember Mr. Smith at Cox Mill, you know, submitting and all that. So, yeah, I would, I think that's accurate.
Can I add something? I think in the past, though, with a high school, you kind of knew where the students were going to come from. So, you, so you could, this one's going to be different. Like the Hickory Ridge, they knew they were coming, a lot of them from Central, and so they were able to form a committee or a student committee or something. So, this one, I don't know if that's feasible until we, until Ms. Reimer tells us where we're going to put them.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but the main focus is to get a name. And so, Ms. Furtinball has made a suggestion. Board members, do you agree with her suggestion to go ahead and... By the end of October, on our, our social media, we can go out and kind of promote that pretty good.
The form is already on your DOL site, but we could certainly link to that on something else.
Well, some posts, some posts that we're doing this, let's get some feedback, get some excitement out of it. Wait a minute, one conversation. What were you saying, Rob? You need to turn your... I was asking Ms. Boone if her, her staff can, can promote it on social media and get some excitement through this so we can get some more applications. Right, Ms. Furtinball, I mean, Ms. Carpenter.
I've changed our name. I, I definitely think it needs to be on our front page of our homepage, where it's very, where it goes right out to them, where they can find it. And it needs to have the information. One of the things we need to definitely look at what, to make sure we don't want to change anything with what's on the request form. I know that most of y'all like it. You know how I feel about one of the things. Now, y'all, y'all know how I feel about, that I feel that maybe the person, you know, on the facility that the person maybe doesn't need to be with us anymore. But that's not on our criteria. But we just need to make sure that we still feel that our criteria is okay. That's one of the things that, because again, we know that things have happened with other facilities and naming of things. So, make sure that our criteria still meets the needs of what we want it to. So, that's, that's just making sure that we, we still agree with the criteria we have there before we put it on our website.
I think to Ms. Carpenter's point, I think the, I had skimmed over this, but, before, but the only thing that we may want to change, and I think this is not as substantial, is at the bottom of the bullets on the form, it should say, or, let's see, I guess, yeah, it's the reference to policy 9300. But the naming facilities form is available on the website at, so that they're not calling the superintendent's office for it. That's not necessary.
Can they submit this thing online, or do they have to complete the form and submit it to the, through the P L box?
I would think...
We can make it an electronic form, but right now, it's not an electronic form.
But if they can email you the same information on here, we'd accept that?
I think it needs to be on the form, so it looks equitable, because people could write it in big paragraphs, and then we're trying to pull out information. So, I mean, I think they can submit any supporting documentation of a person's achievements or something. But I would say, let's stick to the form, but indicate that it's available online at whatever link, so...
Well, can they submit it to us online? That's what she's asking, if they need to submit it to us online.
Yeah, right now, it says you have to mail the form.
Do we want it signed? Don't we want, I don't, does it have a signature on there?
There's name and address.
Okay, it's not, it's not a signature, okay.
As long as you have a follow-up to follow-up with questions and stuff, that's key.
I would stick with, honestly, with emailing.
I don't care if they get the form back to us by carrier pigeon. It would, it would be good for them to have the full form, to be able to print it out, send it online, and our, send it by fax, bring it in, just however suits them, and for whatever their means are of making a good faith effort to give us a good name for the school. So, any, any and all means of getting it back to us is, should be fine.
Send it back to us by email, too. So, if they can submit it back to us, that's fine. To make it is, some people may not be able to, you know, may not have it back to us.
So, as a matter of organization, if they send it email, Ms. Boone, do you think we could set up an email that they can send it to, so we don't overwhelm one person, and then we have a collection box?
We can send it to the Capitol School email, if you're okay with that. Or we can talk to the technology if I need a special review.
I just think it needs to be one common email address that we know where all these are going to.
Where did Ms. Boone say to send it? What, what, where did you say to send it?
Capitol School, it's, it's our general email.
Oh, yeah, why don't we... Oh, yeah, why don't we do that? I don't think there's gonna be a massive volume, you know? And it'll be short-lived for this school, for the next school, and so on.
And then if they decide to fax a form, then is there a known, we just need to make sure that number is well posted as well.
And I think all that can probably be just on the website, because that may change. You don't want to put that in a policy, so.
All right. All right, board members, Ms. Furtinball suggested the end of October. I would think that October 27th is the last Friday. Do you think we could do the close of business on that Friday, or 5:00 on Friday will be the last acceptance? And so, we'll accept forms up through October the 27th at 5:00 PM. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, in the past, when y'all have done naming, did you have a small committee, a small group of board members involved, or did you just put all the information...
We just put all of them together.
Yeah, it's never been that voluminous. I mean, sometimes the packets were voluminous individually, because we had lots of photocopies of newspaper clippings and stuff.
But we all looked at it.
But we all looked at it, and then, yeah.
We just all looked at them, and then...
All right. So, we'll have them on the agenda for the work session on November the 6th, I believe.
And then, some board members even came up with some, so.
That takes care of that item. I don't believe there's anything we need to do with this one. Do we need to, I don't think we need to vote or anything. I think we've got this since...
You pushed it to November.
Do what?
You pushed it to November.
Well, yeah, the work session on November the 6th, I believe, is when we would begin to see the packet of information. And Ms. Monroe would actually have the packet sometime that week prior to put on board docs. All right, board members, that carries us to our action agenda. Item 6.1 is the board travel to the NCSBA District 6 meeting in September, on September the 21st, and that's over in Kannapolis at J.W. Carver. Right now, we have six of us attending. The cost will be $45 per attendee, and this begins at 4:00 in the afternoon.
Just for clarity, this isn't travel money, this is a registration money.
It's just basically registration. There's no real travel expense at this one. Board members, do you want, do we need to vote on this for the next, or can I, I need a motion tonight, excuse me. I do need, I need an action motion, too. Does anyone want to make a motion that we send our board members?
Move to go to the meeting.
Second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, so we've got the District 6 meeting covered. That carries us to the approval of the board travel to the NCSBA Fall Law Conference in Asheville, North Carolina. We have a list of folks, including Mr. Harrison, Ms. Furtinball, Ms. Carpenter, and myself. The full registration is $477. But, and then, the daily rate for the conference is $159. Ms. Monroe needs us to vote on this tonight, so that she can begin filing the paperwork. Is there a motion to approve this?
I've heard from board members over the years that the law conferences are extremely useful. I've been to one myself, and there's been one consistent thing that current and previous board members have said, is that the law conference is just an effective, efficient, very good use of our time, and more than worth our time to go to this conference each year.
Can you add a report in October on your results, or what you've learned to the board?
Yeah, there's a tremendous amount of information that they go through.
Yeah, in November. So, add an agenda item to November, a summary of that conference, and I'll make the motion to approve.
All right. All right, Mr. Walter made the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Fur makes the second. All in favor of approving this list of board members to the law conference, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, that motion carries. Now, that carries us to, oh, yes, ma'am.
One thing, and it was just, and I think it's just an oversight, and it was brought up by one of the board members. Do we need to put something maybe on our agenda for either November? It was brought up about Wolf Meadow, I think it was maybe an oversight. Do we need to put anything on there? Oh, okay.
So, I'm not sure if you remember, but that was actually a board meeting in July, where there was a motion put forward, and then somebody retracted the motion, and then there was a vote, and it was amended. So, when we spoke to that, the minutes from that meeting actually say, "The board voted, and the motion failed by a vote of three in favor and four against. Voting in favor of adding the year-round program to the September meeting agenda were Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Fur, Mr. Powell. Voting against that motion were Mr. Shoemaker, Ms. Furtinball, Mr. Harrison, and Mr. Walter." So, the board actually voted for us not to bring that forward to the September meeting.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't know, and I wanted to make sure, because it was brought up, and I could not remember how, what had happened, so I just wanted to check. So, it was voted down not to bring it back up? Okay.
Well, we didn't actually have a presentation on it at any point, I don't think. I think when we approved the program, it was the understanding we would have a presentation after the first year, but I don't, I don't know that we've had one. That's, I think maybe that would be appropriate to have a presentation, so that, you know, we went to a lot of effort to get that approved, and presenters, and all kinds of expenses there, and I think a presentation would probably be a good idea.
Let's move to call for the board to convene in closed session. Is there a motion to convene in closed session? If you second it, then? All right, so, Mr. Fur made the motion, David Harrison seconded the motion, the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, pursuant to attorney employed or retained by the public body. In order to preserve attorney-client privilege, also pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A5, to establish or to instruct the public body's staff on negotiating, of the public body in negotiating rights or other material terms of contract. Also, General Statute 143, 318, 11A6, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions, appointment, et cetera. All in favor of going into closed session, say aye.